Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, the Dunbarren Board Assembly Meeting, Thursday, October 26th, 2017. The time is 7:06. Two Selectmen present. Bob Nell, he's absent.
Bob Nell? Why you changed his name?
David Nell, he's absent. Just seeing if you're paying attention. And, uh...
Executive President.
Town Executive President. And Leo is recording. Okay, Bob, you want to give me a motion?
Yeah, a motion to accept the regular minutes of October 9th.
I second that. Any discussion on that vote?
None, other than, did you make that correction with Ron Larson?
Oh, no, I didn't. Do we need to add that? He was present?
Yeah, he was present, 'cause he even, you had him in later on where he spoke.
What should be in this, members of the town officials?
Bob just made a motion to accept the minutes?
Uh, with the one, uh, one pen correction.
With a correction.
With a minute, that's okay. And you second him, of course.
He doesn't have to, but...
I will. I will. And, um, but he was a member of the town official. Seventeen, Secretary of Trust.
She did a nice job.
Okay, all favor? Is it a five?
Five.
Okay, I'm gonna open up for public comment, and please state your name for the record, and if you have anything to say, say it now. I'm gonna start right over here, Leo.
I do.
So, I've, I've, how could I guess?
I've got a list.
But do you have money?
No, no money.
No money today?
I've got, I've got some money, but I just got it in today, so...
Okay.
Now's the time to put it on the agenda, next week. First of all, the Town Hall Restoration Project would like to have permission to go upstairs in the Town Hall and put some ghosts and goblins in the windows on the south side. We're gonna have Halloween night, we're gonna be showing Halloween movies on the side of the, uh, Town Hall, and they just wanna have some Halloween decorations in those three windows.
Do they require electricity?
Uh, probably run an extension cord.
Because I was up there this week, and the electricity was not working upstairs.
From the, uh, the bottom of the, the base?
Yes. Please recheck that before you go.
We'll check, we'll check.
But you're asking for permission, though.
Yeah, just to hang decorations in there.
You know, and I, just to go back a little, I know that they talked about that at the last meeting. Some of those actually are gonna involve maybe batteries.
Yeah.
Rather than electric, it's gonna be battery.
Yeah, we're just, I'm gonna use construction. I'm gonna put lights on them.
You're talking about just a couple of people going up, so I don't see a problem, 'cause I guess they've done it in the past, and I guess the Garden Club's done it, so...
Yeah, we had some goblins up there when we had Tom Atmanos' stuff. They had some real good stuff. But, uh, second, the Garden Club will be on the commons, five to eight, with Halloween candy and treats, coffee, donuts, cookies, and the movies, of course, will be playing there also. And I'd like to have permission, I'm gonna put a, I got a banner saying, "Halloween videos brought to you by the Town Hall Restoration," and I'll put out on the commons probably tomorrow morning, after Ben's Coffee, so...
So, it's taken down first thing?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll go down Saturday, or, uh, Halloween night.
Okay.
At eight o'clock, you know, and we're done. We'll clip it out of there. Um, the Chili Supper, the school, and the town offices will be selling tickets, and I'll be at the transfer station on most Saturday mornings and that till about noon and that, to sell tickets also between now and December 16th, or 15th, when the dinner is. So, that's fundraiser for Reese's Across Dunbarren. And, let's see, what else I got here? Oh, don't forget the Harvest Supper on November 4th, next Saturday, a week from this Saturday, I believe it is. So, that, that's at the school.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
I have, uh, just, I think you had a consensus of approval, you put the decorations upstairs.
Yeah, I don't have a full...
Okay. Just, uh, just police them up afterwards, 'cause there's a tendency for stuff to accumulate up in the library, you know, people leave stuff, and it ends up...
Okay.
The poor librarian has to throw it away afterwards.
You said transfer station, where was the other place you're selling the tickets?
The school business office.
School, okay, thank you.
Woody?
Uh, Patrick Brown, couple of quick things. One, we're planning on staying open Wednesday night before Thanksgiving. We normally do that. And the other thing is, uh, what your thought is on Saturday, November 11th, which is Veterans' Day? I won't be there, 'cause it's a holiday. It's a holiday for me. I don't know if you want the facility to stay open, how you wanna do it. I just assume it stays open, but my guys don't get paid if they don't work. I don't know what your thoughts are.
Didn't we just change the policy for part-timers? Wouldn't that be across the board? To work on a holiday? But there's, um...
But it's more, it's not, it's more just, oh, we're gonna keep it open for that day.
Yeah.
I think Saturday's, uh, I think Saturday's the busiest day of the week.
It has a tendency to be.
Is the holiday being actually celebrated?
Yep. November 11th is one of the holidays that's celebrated.
On the day of, as far as it falls on.
And it's a federal holiday.
Yep. One more comment? Please.
Uh, on, uh, Thursday, the school, uh, I think it's the ninth, are having the breakfast for all the veterans, and RSVP to Shelley at the school.
Understood.
And it's a great, it's a great ceremony, they really do a good job.
But, uh, getting back to the transfer station, I'm kinda like, I don't know if you wanna close that.
I know that other towns do. I mean, the Goss Town would be closed, um, I don't know if Ware is closed.
The thing is, we have enough time, if we wanted to announce it, it could be at least allowed to announce it at Tommy Manor, without making a knee-jerk reaction and cancel the call accordingly. I'm open up to the public here.
Yeah, okay, um, but those places are closed, so they have more hours available. See, that's the, might be the difference, because what'll happen is, all you have is gonna, you're gonna have Tuesday afternoons when people work a lot, and Wednesday afternoon and evening, and that's all you have, you know, so it's gonna make it pretty tough for...
I'm leaning to us leaving it open, Bob. What about you?
Uh, well, we should examine the holiday policy.
Right, because we did change the policy for part-timers working on a holiday.
And you get the updated one?
Basically, what it says is that they get paid time and a half.
Right.
So, I, you know, we're not talking about a lot of hours, it's just a few guys, and, you know, it probably wouldn't hurt, it's probably gonna be more dangerous for the residents to be able to go there if they want to, and get rid of their stuff, so...
Woody, have you asked the feeling of what they, if they want to work, or if they, have you not rounded up with them at all?
What was that answer? I didn't, no, no.
I haven't discussed it, Woody.
Because we're not too far away, you know, when you say no knee-jerk reaction, but we meet once a week, and next weekend's the fifth, the following weekend's the 11th.
That's the second, yeah, the second weekend.
Is the fourth.
Yeah.
So, the 11th is the next, the following one. So, you only get two weeks.
I'd say it's worth, the residents will, will want it.
Yeah. I mean, even if you, if you gotta pay them time and a half.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not a big deal, I think the benefit to the townspeople being limited hours, they'd be much happier with it.
I think so, too.
As the alternative.
And the guys may go extra money every year.
No, that's not gonna break the town budget. That's why, that's why we're leaning.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Woody, I think consensus is we leave it open.
Okay, that's, I just, that was kinda my thought, I just wanted you a blessing.
Thank you for bringing it up. It's a, it's a town win.
This happens this year, who knows when it'll happen?
Yeah, exactly. It will be different next year, for sure. Yeah. Linda, anything for group?
Nothing for public comment.
Okay. Linda is also a town official, and it's, has been present for tonight.
Oh, okay, yeah, thank you.
Sir? Okay, back to the board. Okay, we have a, uh, looks like we have a checkbook cabinet, do you have the paperwork for that?
Yeah, it's in it. It's actually the St. Jean's Auction. It's in a packet there. But, keep going.
Keep going.
Keep going.
Is that the old Korean vehicle?
Yeah, actually. Is it underneath this one, I think? There's a breakdown of St. Jean's Auction.
Okay.
Did you leave it in the basket?
Yeah, I did. It's okay, I leave this, I can accept the amount.
Yep.
Basically, I, per RSA, 31,95-B, Roman number 3B, is basically, we got a receipt, or a check for, uh, for revenue from the sale of the fire department equipment, an amount of $1,938. I make moves to accept that money. Certain. Any discussion? I think the chief is a good steward of taxpaying dollars.
Got a leak in his roof anyway.
I know, who's gonna need it? Okay, so, all in favor? Aye. We accept that. And just while we're on the fire department, I just thought I'd mention that, Bob wasn't joking, there is a leak in the roof of the fire department. He needs to get quotes on that as soon as, it's gonna be clear for the next several days. I would, that's a Ferrari. So, I ask...
Then he was cheaper, find out what a bucket costs.
Do it, he's a businessman. But it'd be a bucket parade. There you go. Can't they use a lot?
Okay, have a pumper truck, they can dump it.
Bob, do you second that?
Yes, I did.
Okay, uh, we also, I'm gonna go right to the mailboxes for General Town Business. There was some concern, some citizens last week brought up some concern about the extra money we get from the highway, uh, from highway funds that could be used on existing projects. And we got the, we got a first opinion from the Municipal Association, that's affirmative yes. Well, Bob is pursuing a second opinion, and, uh...
Yeah, from the Department of Transportation, I reached out to the phone number they gave us, and the guy answered the phone, said his first gut reaction was no, but with the, when I gave him all the intricacies of that bridge project, he, the girl, or the woman that used to do bridges within the state retired, but she consults with them a couple times a week, she was in, I guess, makes a couple of days' pay going in to give them advice. She knows all the bridges, so he's gonna bring it to her, 'cause with the situation, it may be that it qualifies, so, I mean, they got that decision there that says it would qualify, and I think we're gonna probably hear the same thing from Department of Transportation.
So, it's looking better.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I'm just going by the cover letter that was sent, and I don't think they were trying to be that, in my opinion, that stringent. It was, I don't think we could buy a fire truck with it, or, you know, offset the school budget, I don't think that was the goal, anyway.
No, I think the, uh...
I mean, it could be a shell game, or you say, no, you can't, all right, we'll take the money from here, pay this, put this back over here.
Right.
So, I mean, I do think they realize that, I, uh...
But the thing is, the fact that we're not taking any money away from the project.
No.
Or, or my, our project, increasing the... That's good news, we should have, Bob should have another opinion this week, which we're just firming up, and, uh, and Lean is actually working with you to prepare the request or proposal. And you identified, understand a few, uh...
Yep.
Okay, great, great. You reach out to, for like, an invitation?
Uh, if you suggest it, I'll...
No, I think goes to, goes to Bob.
I will get you, I'll send you a copy, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, um, tomorrow is our last day, we're accepting applications for, uh, for the zoning planning department, and we have packets, we have six qualified applicants, all so far, potentially one more day open. What I wanted to, Bob, is, uh, we have all stakeholders who wanna get a packet, and they can study it at home, rate them, put their concerns on paper, then we're gonna have a hiring session.
Right, a work session.
A work session, yeah, it's a hiring session, and we'll interview the candidates in the, probably within the next two weeks. We're gonna wait for the third second to get back.
Are you putting that under the mailbox?
Yes, yeah, just that, uh, we made, we have some for the building, planning, zoning department, we have qualified candidates, and we're getting prepared to pursue a hiring action. And we also need to have a work session, or, when we, as we approach the budget season, we now have all the dollar figures in for the health trust, the insurance options.
Yeah, this is just a summary sheet, and, um, for you to take home and look at, but I will come up with the separate spreadsheets like I did last year to give you the...
Impact on, on...
Two, two-year, the current year and the new year, and the difference in the rates.
If, for each plan that was...
For each plan that is listed here, there's five plans.
Okay. And the impact to Dunbarren versus, yeah, dollar figures, like, spreadsheet you had?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Yep, that seemed to work pretty good.
All right, so that's, that's information for us.
Do you need to do that in minutes?
Yes, but then, we have the updated, uh, cost figures, updated cost figures.
I have it here.
Okay, great. Okay, um, the, um, the school board is preparing, Lean has asked for some language here that I think is something to be worth discussing.
Um, I guess I can just talk on that?
Yeah, I want you to...
I put together two warrant articles that I'd like to propose to the school board. The same reason, I don't, yeah, do you have it? It's, uh, part of the municipal budget law, section 32-5, colon, 5, budget preparation. Uh, the first RSA is, um, 32, colon, 5, Roman, um, V-A, and that would be for all votes of the governing body related to budget items, to record a vote, and, and numerical tally, which they're currently practicing, but when I inquired with the Department of Revenue, they said they did not have any record that they had formally adopted it. Um, so they've been practicing it from their records and looking at their town report since 2007. Uh, Department of Revenue said it would not be a bad thing if we, we currently practice the numerical tally to formally adopt the RSA, so I'm gonna recommend to the Dunbarren Elementary School Board that they put this article on their 2018 school warrant. And then the other part of this is the RSA 32, colon, 5-V-B, and, uh, that would be to require, any town may vote to require that the annual budget and all special warrant articles having a tax impact as determined by the governing body shall contain a notation stating the estimate, estimated tax impact of the article. And, um, the reason for that is, I feel like, where, where, a lot of times, a lot of people are not informed as to what they're, they're voting on, the town side has adopted this, uh, these two RSAs, I just feel it would be helpful for the taxpayers to have it.
Explain how we incorporate it. In it, like, in the town report?
Yep.
If we ever warrant, you all, you see how the selectmen voted for it, either they were against it, for it, or abstained against it, and there's a tax impact.
Right, so those are two different parts.
Right.
The B and the A. So, the A is currently being practiced, and we're asked that they formally adopt it, um, and then the B is to show the impact of that warrant on the budget and the warrants as they are discussed during their school meetings.
From the selectmen, we, it's a recommendation from us, so I, we recommend, at least I recommend, Bob, if you have a consensus, I recommend they incorporate some of that.
Well, I think they should anyways, you know?
Right.
I mean, even, when you look at the state legislature, there's always a fiscal impact with the bills, so, I mean, it shouldn't...
And by doing this, I, I'm proposing it to the elementary school, and if they choose not to, then, as a taxpayer, I'll pursue a petition warrant article, because I think this is very important, it's been, uh, it's opened the discussion with the public, when they see what the impacts are, and I think it should be on both sides of the, um, the tax burden for the town, that they know what they're voting on.
I, I, I think it's a reasonable, uh, expectation for the, for taxpayers.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm gonna talk about a few other town businesses, I have some steel outside the library.
Okay.
And the thing is, I tell us, any progress with, uh...
Okay, I contacted the current site supervisor that we had on hand for Score Construction.
Is he still employed?
Chuck. I asked him what had happened with the meeting that was supposed to have happened with the steel company, and he was told that he was not to go to that meeting. I asked if he was still working for Score Construction, and replied, was not exactly, without elaborating, and so I said, okay, then I will take our discussion to the board and, um, look for guidance as to where and what I'd go with, you know, what direction to go.
It seems, Bob, my impression is that, once we, uh, we're pursuing that, you know, legal, you know, with the letter and all that kinda stuff from, from, from a, from a town lawyer, they got a little life to them, and then their life just flickered out.
Yeah, I, I thi, I think we have to pursue it through our attorney now and push Paul, whatever his last name is, with Score Construction, is to, you know, either you would get this done, or we would probably have to do something, by taking him to court.
Now, the immediate concern people have mentioned to me is that, in the, um, in the parking lot, we have Halloween next Tuesday, is that a trip hazard enough? Do we have a, do we have anything like barriers we could put around there, or do we move the steel?
I was gonna say, we could do that, or if you wanted, you could, and I don't see why this were complicated, we could move it to an area at the highway garage, or it would be out of the way.
I know.
Or would you rather keep it on-site?
Well, you know, that's an idea, though, moving it to the highway.
I mean, it's not, we're not gonna, uh, it wouldn't damage it or anything, I mean, the problem is, it doesn't fit, um, and who knows, I mean, it could be a while before you get this done, it's, it's your call, I mean, we have barricades, we have cones, we could cordon it off, but it doesn't sound like it's gonna change in the next couple of days.
Well, if we get snow, it could be a problem for the plow truck.
It will be at some point. And it is kind of bothersome for the people parking it. It's your call, whatever you wanna do, I mean...
Even with the cones, you end up having somebody that's gonna end up possibly...
I mean, kids like to climb on things, and walk on things, I mean, I was a kid, I'd climb all over that.
Newspaper delivery has hit it already, the people, and, and when it's dark out, they...
Yeah, I mean, if we could, we got a place off the side where it would be out of the way, we could, if you want.
Yeah.
Your call. And for very little effort, I'll be, mine's probably, we could do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think that's a good solution, rather than...
Yeah, and, and at the same time, that'll address the immediate concern.
Yeah.
It was brought up by citizens, and, um, I think, uh, the second thing is, uh, I think we need to talk to our town attorney, like Bob said again.
Yeah, I think we need to be a little more forceful with Score Construction.
Okay, so, you're okay with me reaching out to her and getting a letter?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
There's no doubt about that. This has gone on too long.
Sometime in the next couple of days, we'll get it. Before Tuesday, we'll get that, it might work out tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be wonderful. I'm just concerned, the cones that are out there belong to the library.
All right, I'll just leave them by the door.
Yeah, Mary, the, she put the cones out?
Yeah, no, that's easy enough to do.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna go back to, uh, public comment, then bring it back to the board. Okay. Public comment one more time, I'll start the side.
Yeah, actually, I do have something, Lean, kind of, maybe my brain kicked in a little bit, talking about the school. I, my understanding is, they have a, like, a meeting next week, and I can't remember what it is, the 30th, about, about that?
Yep.
And talking with John Wigan, he had given me a little insight to what was gonna happen up there. I guess they are, they're gonna, uh, if the project moves forward as planned right now, they're gonna have to relocate their fire road behind the school a little bit?
Or where they're working?
No, permanently.
Okay.
Which, that's, that's fine, I, where, where I'm going with this is, we do have issues with the existing parking lot behind the fire station, police station, that the school uses, and, um, I didn't know if maybe somehow we could dovetail that project, rehabbing that project, the parking lot, or maybe that fire road or something, or should I not even suggest it?
No, the thing is, the thing is, if they're gonna be tearing up ground...
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know, the parking lot, in the past, has always been the, this side of the town's responsibility.
Being responsible for the outside.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's a fine line, it's all-town money, it doesn't make any interest which pocket that came.
But, but it's, it'd be nice to point it with the school to...
Well, that's what I was thinking, 'cause that parking lot is, is in bad shape. Last year, we had a couple of visitors came in, and they talked about it, and it is, I mean, if, you can't just, I don't believe you can just put a layer of asphalt on it, it's a different, um...
And it'd be next summer, too.
Well, I was thinking, if it, if it moves ahead...
Yeah.
You kinda tie it all together, and we'll finish it off. I mean, I was intending on going to the meeting, so I'll know a little more about it, but I could just think about it.
Yeah, I think generally, it's, I think it's a great idea, Bob, what do you think?
Well, if, if the project goes...
Oh, yeah, that's what I mean, regardless, we're gonna do something to the parking lot, yeah. But I was just thinking, now, I don't know, again, you know, if we have to do it, I don't know if they're planned, that's why I gotta find out more about the information, how far they plan to go with it, and that's why I wanna go to the meeting.
And the key thing, the plan's gotta be approved first.
Yeah, exactly, but I, just something to keep on the back burner.
Yeah, I get you, I'm clear.
Good idea, all right.
You, you referring to the plan to expand the school?
Yes, the school renovation, so...
I guess they have, like, a informative meeting, I suppose.
Yeah, it's public, uh, public comment session, public session. Linda?
Yes, um, regarding the petition that Lean is suggesting, the petition warrant article?
Yes.
Um, I don't know that a non-resident can initiate a petition, I would have to check the election law to, to check that.
Okay.
But she definitely cannot sign it, because only people on the Dunbarren voter checklist...
I know.
What's that?
I know that. I, I don't plan on signing it, but...
For, uh, point of order, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a good...
But I will follow up and just confirm that was secondary state.
Okay.
I wouldn't want it thrown out, because...
For that, for a technical...
Yeah, yeah, I'll make sure someone else initiates, initiates it. Okay.
Let's put it that way.
Thumbs up on that one, perfect. Woody, Dawn?
Uh, I got a question for you. I was at the cemetery, uh, New Hampshire Cemetery Association meeting, and, uh, one of the cemeteries had their cemetery declared a historical landmark, and because of that, they were able to get funding to repair rock walls, stuff like that, from the moose plate, uh, fund.
Right.
So, my question is, what do we have to do to make our cemeteries historic landmarks? Because we, you know, we go back 1700s, you know, and just all three of them here.
I'm gonna ask the gentleman, next to your table.
I think you need to ask them what the criteria is to do that.
Yeah.
That's, you'd have to go there, to, to the, uh, state, is that through the state? What the criteria is to, to have that designated, uh, uh, you know, what...
Circle site?
Yeah, a landmark, yeah.
Landmark, yeah. Because, I mean, I'm sure they don't know what the criteria is.
No, I, you took the words out of both of ours, uh, we were thinking the same thing. There's gotta be a criteria somewhere delineated.
Right, and they would know what that is.
Exactly.
Do you think Terry Knowles works with the trusts and the cemeteries?
Well, it would be, you know, make it a landmark, and then you apply for the moose plate, so if you do the moose plate thing, well, they won't do it, because it's not a historical landmark, you know, so...
Who, what town is this?
Uh, Seabrook.
So, you might wanna contact them?
Yeah, well, that's why I talked to them, yeah.
Okay, and they might be able to lead you to, you know.
Yeah.
To duplicate it, if they did.
Pot of gold.
But would, would, would we need to make it a warrant article to do that?
Well, let's, 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 that's potential, but let's see what the criteria is.
Yeah, without knowing any, any facts.
I, I think, I think everyone in the room would definitely say, yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah.
But, let's just, uh, let's see what we have to do first, I mean, if we have to put ten thousand dollars up, well, that's a different story.
No, it's not gonna cost them, I think, like.
Cause, uh, a lot of times, people like matching funds.
Yeah, not knowing is hard to make a decision.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, okay, anything else, Don?
No.
Okay, Leo?
I was gonna ask you about that steel, and it looks like you guys corrected all of that, so that's good.
As I said, uh, when you approached me, we were on top of it, we were, we were working the issue.
Didn't want any of those little feet, the cones, like I said, would not cover that.
No, I was thinking, if anything.
It's dark, and kids climbing, and, you know.
It almost required jersey barriers.
Kids care about cones, you know.
Yeah, I have one more thing to bring.
No, it's coming to, it's coming back to the board. Okay, now it's back to the board, I'm gonna go to Bob first.
Let's hold them all together, make a jungle gym out of them.
Uh, I'll, Leo to her, okay.
Builders, who's been, um, approved to install the gutters over in the library.
Yes.
Stopped by today and waited patiently for the rain to stop, but came in to the building and said, it doesn't look like it's gonna stop, we're not allowed to climb our ladders during the rain, so they will reschedule that install in the next few days. And I do have a name of a, um, carpenter that was given to me by, uh, Mary.
Okay.
And I will reach out to him, yeah, I'll reach out to him to see if, um, if the door installation would be something that he'd be interested in doing, or if we're getting quotes on that, so maybe we can get that project taken off, taken care of.
Should we tell the school story about what he did? The gentleman came in, he's a handyman, came in, and he mounted something for Mary, a little gift that she received, and there was a door right next to it, and the internal door with a push bar, and Bob and I were looking, you know, we take it apart, we never, it's broken, and we said, we take it apart, we'd never get it back together correctly. Two, two screw, two screws, and like, thirty seconds later, it was fixed.
That's what I thought.
So, it was nice, and he didn't charge it, so he fixed the, fixed something else, and Mary spoke very highly of it.
So, the holes were a little worn?
I don't know, he, Mary didn't.
I fixed, I fixed the top once before.
Yeah, the, the ones on top are worn.
Well, I fixed one, one of them before, and all you did, I did was put, uh, wooden matches in the hole, and then put the screws back in, and it, it's fine.
That's what Larry would do.
You know, sometimes I'd put a little glue on the match first, and then glue it in.
Wood glue and wood, and it works, yeah.
But, uh, that's, that's great, so.
Yeah, so I'll follow up, because this is moving forward, there was no need to hold up, you know, installing a new door, we can get it right.
No, anything is, we just need a couple quotes.
Yeah, yes.
Good, make it clear, okay, anything else from town business?
No, that, we discussed that, and everything was kind of pending, because I wanted to wait for the full board, so next week, we'll have a full schedule.
Okay.
Um, one, I guess one other thing, um, the, uh, project supervisor for the ORIN, or, I believe it's called, the, organization with the farm down.
Yes.
Um, has been in touch with us, wanting to meet with the board to, um, present his, the project, and the whole, um, process. In that, during this last two weeks, uh, we found that there have been a number of different things that they have already, um, put in place without a permit, so they, he's finally gotten into the office to try to get the file up
We were true.
With, with, with the proper permitting, uh, which is not complete yet, but, um, between that, and then the information that, um, Mike Cummings has, um, reached out with other different departments, we should have a fairly, um, complete list of items that this gentleman, Ian, will address for us, and then we can invite, um, all the butters and the property owners as well, um, during a meeting, and I didn't know if that's something you wanted to do, try to do next Tuesday, or attempt to do it the following.
Two, two weeks.
Okay, so I can.
Let's pencil in two weeks.
Two weeks out?
Yep.
Okay.
And we'll have to make, I like to make an invite to those people attending that meeting, the first meeting, and, uh, property owners, yes?
Yeah, and then that way, I can make sure that, um, the letter that he, of items that he should be addressing will be prepared to answer on that list from Mike.
And you can tell him he'll have lots of other questions from the butters.
I did, I did tell him that.
I don't wanna get into, like, a murder session for him, I want, I just wanted to, uh, I think we have a lot of answers for the butters already, and, uh.
I think it's called ORIS, or, I'm gonna, it's abbreviated, but I will get, uh, I'll reach out to Ian, and we'll schedule that for.
I can check, take that off my list, you took care of it.
November ninth, it would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, scary, huh, right on the corner.
Anything else, Lean?
Well, that's it.
Okay, now to you, Bob, anything?
Uh, well, the only other thing was, I, you know, we had looked at the building, and I brought, uh, my concerns with the paint.
Yes.
It had to be touched up, I met with him Monday morning here, uh, he had two other guys come in, he did take care of all of that, and around the corner. We also walked again, just in case I may have missed something, walked around the building again, those were the only areas that had to be taken care of.
Okay.
And from what it looks like, it looks like it took, did a pretty good job, he was apologetic, and didn't realize it.
White, it's hard to see white sometimes, uh, white and white, uh, to be painted.
Yep, that was, that was, last payment, I think he came in like seventy dollars under his maximum quote, so.
Okay, excellent, thank you, Bob. You took a thunder from me, Corin, do you have anything for the, for the group? You did a good, a great job last week, for not being here, for transcribing.
Yeah, um, not that I can think of it, just, I just wanna double check, uh, did you come about Mr. Title, something was missed?
The pair under these windows here and around the corner.
Several, several, um, shortcomings were found in the paint job.
Yeah, it just needed to be, uh, another color paint over it, cause you could see the wood underneath.
The only thing, we have work in action, I'm gonna just talk about work in progress, is, um, we're getting quotes for the, um, uh, the drip line, I mean, at the town hall. That's work in progress, um, we talked about the doors are gonna be working, but we're still working progress, we need quotes from the doors, with a, with a door in the library. Yeah, and, uh, Dave, as a door man, too, we may pursue him as a quote, too, so we'll have at least two. Quote, uh, we're gonna, uh, we are gonna, uh, as soon as Dave comes back, we're gonna get a consensus to move that, uh, upon his return. He needs to just confirm the location, that he's happy with it, too, I wanna make sure we're all, uh, on, in consensus with that, just to bring everyone up to speed on that, uh, I think we defer, we, we're, with things like roofs leaking now, with, uh, an acute basis, we're not pursuing a case. I think, uh, looking at the quilt over there, I'm satisfied, this, this quilt will last twenty years without any injury.
Okay.
So, uh, we are not gonna pursue a case at this time.
Okay, so I'll send them, I'll let them.
Yeah, unless, uh, I'm overruled by my.
No, I agree with you, we have too many things that need taking care of before we buy a case, and, you know, looking at the other quilt that she's had up in the library for twenty years, has very little impact from anything, so.
Yeah.
This is a more sheltered area, this should, should look pretty good.
Lastly, uh, the thing is, a concern to me, um, it was non at my, I couldn't go to a seat the other night, so I was thinking about things wrong in the town, and see what you're laughing, it was true, the thing is, I got thinking about water, it's raining now, then I got thinking about town water, and the thing is, we use this, uh, we have this, uh, we're notorious for two things in New Hampshire, arsenic and radon, I think, uh, I wanna make sure that we put it in the budget cycle this year, we test, we do, you know, regular, regular testing of our town water supply.
Yeah, it's been a few years, and you remember when the last time you did yours at the transfer station, it's been like five years or something?
We were all done at the same time.
Several years back.
Kyle Parker was here, that's.
Yeah, I, I think it'd be worthwhile to benefit, uh, our employees, our people who use the water, and, I guess, uh, boy, he said, come up and get your water during the drought, and it's full of arsenic. That's, uh, we gotta, I think we have a duty to.
It's too late now.
Yeah, we have a duty to inform, and so on.
A little doctor?
No, but I, I was just, that's, uh, that was my insomnia the other night.
I meant to get that out of the bottle.
No, but the thing is, that, we'll put that into the budget for this year, and we can start doing testing, uh.
Yep, regularly.
Regular.
They do recommend that by the state anyways.
Yep, and I think that we have, uh, duty to citizens and to the, our people who use the water.
Okay.
Okay, at this point, I'm gonna make a motion, we go into non-public. Per RSA ninety-one dash alpha, colon, three, Roman number two, dollars.
And our second proposal.
Individual vote, Minsky, yes.
Bob, hell, yes.
Okay, we are going.